Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I would like to call this meeting to order at ten o'clock for the Committee on Health and Human Services. We have a quorum. So first order of business, like a motion for the minutes. Second by Sam, seconded by Daryl. I'm all in favor.
Alright.
The tasks. Second order of business, Department requests reports, DSS. Are you up Tammy?
I am.
Come on. Over.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Happy. Happy, and I think that's gonna try to get this up on the screen. I didn't give her an awful lot of warning about it. Side of the room. Side of the room. I'm not sure what her success will be. It doesn't go. Yes, I heard that. Maybe they were celebrating freedoms. Did you try? I'll try to find that out. Okay, good. That's good. So this is a chart that we have used through the years to illustrate how overall our budget is looking. Generally speaking, the earlier you do it, the more out of whack it's gonna be because it's early in the year. But there are some takeaways from this, and I color coded them just to make it easier to be able to pull in your, all of our focus on it. The thing I want to say though is this is not an equal view, like side by side revenue with cost because the timelines are different. So this is our expenditures as of May twentieth, but it is our claims for our revenues through three thirty-one. And even with that expenditures through five twenty, it does not, of course, include all expenses that we've had up to this point. There are a lot of things that are yet to come to be reflected. But it is, it is what we can look at and with everything having unfolded with the budget last year, I wanted to be able to get this in front of you as soon as possible this year and we'll continue to look at it throughout the year as well. Any questions just as it relates to this paper being put down in front of you before we go to these colored boxes? Okay, so the first blue is the the orange highlighted areas. The first one on here is the equipment. And I really just wanted to bring your attention to the fact that that remaining balance is largely going to remain unspent until we hear more with direction from the board related to vehicles. But also part of this, about fifty thousand or so gross of this it would have been attached to an initiative from a technology initiative that IT had recommended to us as far as switching DSS over to the county system. Now we're, we're still on state servers. That's why our email addresses look different. So we started a pilot project for it and the outcome of that really made it appear and it seemed that it was going to be far more of a burden than a benefit. So we're stopping that process at this point. So there was a lot of other equipment that would have been needed to move forward with that and not spending it. That's about fifty thousand. The rest of that balance is because of the vehicles. We have purchased one, as you know, and that cost has already been reflected. So what is there? In addition to the other things that I've just spoken about is around eighty-six thousand dollars that had been set aside originally at the budget for vehicles. So those two numbers, of course, are gross. But that could be left there to be unspent as far as realizing savings if that is what is in hearts for us, I guess. The yellow highlighted area. If you look at the percentages in the expended column there, you'll see where family assistance is reflecting forty-three percent and foster care is reflecting fourteen point nine percent. That's, of course, a little out of whack with the time frame that we're at in the year. And it's related to a retroactive change that came to us last year, but after we would have set up this year. It took the cost of a very high cost foster care placement that had been reflected previously in our foster care line, and now it applies it to our family assistance line. So family assistance funds more, a lot of different things to include our cash assistance for families through temporary assistance, but also can be some of our foster care expenses. It is better for us as a whole to have our foster care expenses go through that line than it is through the foster care line. So this is really a win for us. You might remember last year when I would have been talking about our high cost placements. One of them being an out of state placement that I would have shared was roughly twenty-three thousand dollars a month. It was about that amount, just to roughly say that one placement that we were in excess of our foster care block grant last year, which then meant that that full amount was a local cost. The state had a glitch in their system and with a claims review, we were able to work that through. And they haven't acknowledged that they were wrong, but they have said it was something in their system. So that cost now is actually able to go to family assistance. So we're working through still that retroactive change for last year. We are, we haven't seen any of that revenue yet. But when we're now making these payments, that extra twenty-three thousand a month is pulling from family assistance. So the bottom line is, it's good news for us, gives you a little more history on some of the things that we've talked about in the past. But it will, based on how we set up our budget, if regular family assistance spending continues as it has, we will in the end need to do a resolution, likely just flipping between those two categories. The other, the next is the green highlighted area. That is general delinquent appropriation and it captures the raise the age spending also. Payments for JD related costs are like detention, transportation placement. They pull from both the sixty-one twenty-three JD line and the sixty-one twenty-nine state training line. We've talked in the past that some of these charges are two and three years delayed. Some of them do come through relatively quickly. Something with the raise the age plan can get paid directly by the state, though we see a bill, it is that zeroed out currently. So I guess the long and short of that is it makes it very hard to budget for. We are in receipt of a bill right now that was for thirty days of placement in twenty twenty-three for one child. That is twenty-one thousand dollars. So next month I will be coming with a resolution to be able to adjust our appropriations and allow for payment of that. So letting you know there's more to come in that one area. Any questions yet? The blue highlighted area, those percentages of expended show in code blue fifty twenty-eight and in heat sixty-nine point one. That heat is just the payments that get paid directly to clients or vendors by our department. It is not all of the rest of the ones that are sent directly through. We administer it for the feds. The money goes directly out. It doesn't flow through our budget for the rest of the larger So anyway, looking at those two things, as you know, they are seasonal costs. So since we're in the warmer part of the year, it makes sense that we were not having any of those expenses now. We spent out through the latter part of the winter, the beginning part of this year, and we'll spend through the beginning of next winter and latter part of this year. Hope I said that correctly. That I skipped over the orange of the sixty point forty down below. With that, I would just say that it's extremely premature for us to use that as some way to extract any information about our final cost, our final overall revenue. It is again reflecting only partial. Part of the, part of the expenses that we've already paid is, is in that sort of, I mean, we don't have all of the rest for the year. So though that number is frighteningly low, it is also very uncertain.
I understand. I think that that number is only through three thirty-one, right? And are you using the expenses through five twenty?
Yes.
So there's a whole.
Yes.
I mean, three thirty-one is twenty-five percent of the year and thirty-eight percent of the year. So we can't do anything. You could actually make an adjustment. We wanted to, and I'm not gonna do it on the fly, but you're, you know, much higher.
Yes. And as I believe we had something that we looked at last month or month before with all of the different, all of our different categories and how those percentages can vary between a hundred percent funded to, you know, twenty-one percent or depending on where it falls, sometimes zero. So it is also very oversimplified to have that. But you're, you're right. Right now, it's, it is just based on these straight numbers and it's very much out of sequence to be able to count down.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused because I see that we have, we listed, we have listed out Office for the Aged, you know, we listed out their salaries and equipment and they've got their fringes. So might to assume that their programs are included with these.
Yes, yes, that is right.
So we really don't know what portion of it actually falls within OFA portion of it, falls within the.
Right. If we, if we went to the full breakout of our budget and all of those lines, we'd be able to isolate for you what those costs are.
Ms. Bryant.
So I know last year, part of our situation was reconciliations. Are there already reconciliations included in these numbers? Are we still expecting that to happen or not?
There are multiple processes that can happen that either deduct, give us chargebacks or reflect in.
Right, but did any happen so far?
I can't answer that question to be completely honest with you. It's, it's it's as our business flows that that would be happening. I have not been, there's certainly not been anything that's been brought to my attention and it would if it were a surprise large expense.
And so if we've come to any conclusion as to why the revenue did not come last year?
The revenue did come last year.
Well, it's sixty-two percent.
It did not come at sixty-two percent. The overall average was sixty-two percent.
Right. That's, that'll go by.
So for each category that we spent money in, we receive back the appropriate revenue for them. Our spending was higher in a lower revenue category. So overall, that balanced out to a lower overall percentage. But the, the actual revenue came as it should have. It was, the reason it was lower was because of the areas that we spent it.
Okay, I would believe that, except we didn't even meet budget. So if we met budget in expenses, why didn't we meet budget in revenue?
We did not meet budget. We didn't meet budget in expenses.
Now you're way over. So I know you're getting no revenue on what you're over. I did figure that out from people at the state. So I know a million and a half wasn't coming anyway. I get that. But if we don't know how the money didn't come, so if you know which places we were over, you could show us that. You just haven't.
I just, I just haven't?
Yes, no, because I haven't seen where, where you were over. I've not seen that listed out anywhere. We were over. And I would like to know where that is so I could see if we're gonna hit those again and be over this year in order to project where we're gonna be at the end of the year.
May I, I've been wrestling with what we have all been wrestling with for quite a while and something occurred to me last night. You know, my father was a safety officer, investigated aircraft accidents and investigations. We have a very complex situation here that is beyond a lot of our understanding and where we can't expect simple, easy answers. And we need to do the proper slow investigation so we can understand this. I think that's really, we're working through it and we have a lot of questions. And it's a lot harder to answer questions on the fly for a very complex problem if we still have it on the panel.
I have provided you every single document that I can provide you to help understand what, what that difference is. It is all been very transparent. It's been stuff that's been provided through the state as well as from other counties. I've given you as much clarity to it as I can in our separate work group type meetings. It is all there and it is all explained. The largest part of it was the extra foster care spending and the extra homeless spending. So one of those very large foster care factors has now been retroactively changed because of a problem that had existed within the state system. That is roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from last year.
Is it likely to come in and just?
It was twenty-three thousand a month, get the four hundred and fifty.
Because it was more than just last year.
But, but it only changed last year by about four hundred thousand. See, I'm trying to understand where we're gonna be at the end. I, I can't do twenty-six budget on no facts at all. I have to have something. Do we need higher auditor to come in and figure that out? If we do, I'm not opposed to that. I would like to know how we got here and if we eat some of our expertise. I have no problem with that.
We do not need anybody with more expertise. We need people that can understand the information that we have. Our costs are the result of the people that are coming in through the front door and the bills that we're receiving for the services for them. So when we have very high cost foster care placements, that impacts it. When we have very high numbers of homeless people, that impacts it. We are working very, very diligently to reduce the number of homeless people and we are making headway. Every single person in my department that has a piece of it is, is doing it. Some of them are borrowing pieces from others and doing it. We are bringing those numbers down. The housing market, the renters, the availability of lower cost units has broken a little bit and opened up. We do still need more affordable housing, but we are, we are working on it. This one placement that was our most costly as we viewed it last year without having reimbursement is now being reimbursed. Other than that, it is a matter of where our kids are and how we can work to get them down into lower levels of care.
And I agree that you're people working hard. I'm not. That is, I don't have a problem with that. Your people are working diligently and all that. I'm just trying to understand if the reconciliation is still yet to come that we got last year. Because we didn't know till March that we were gonna lose three point five billion in this department. And so our taxpayers need to know, our other departments need to know the reason why we're facing a twenty percent tax increase for this year is this one department is gonna keep us from doing things in all these other departments. Our taxpayers need to know why they're getting such a tax increase and why money isn't being spent where they maybe want it to be spent is being spent here. And I understand that, you know, DSS has always gotten ill will when it wasn't necessary. It's a very important business and it actually was set up to take care of the disadvantaged and keep them from falling further down and help our communities. The problem is with the state and the way they've done things, it has changed to where instead we have decimated our communities. We've ruined every motel there is in every community in Washington County. And now we're even hoping to ruin some in Warren County and Saratoga County. To me, I don't think the system was ever meant to decimate our communities. It was made to make them better. And I don't know how we readjust to get there. I just hope that we can because this is a bad situation to be in. And I don't want, I don't want everybody to look at the board of supervisors. It's like, we didn't do our job. We're trying to do our job, but it's something that maybe it is beyond our control. But let's be able to show the public why it's beyond our control and what is mandated. I'm just trying to get the story out correctly. I'm not trying to be demeaning to anybody or any department. This just has to be the department that caused our fund balance and put us in this situation. And going forward, we don't want this to happen again. So I need to learn from what happened to keep us from getting there, if it's at all possible. I don't think that's a huge thing to add.
Please don't hear me saying that I don't take this as my responsibility and that I'm not utilizing my authority effectively within the department. We are all doing what we can. In past years, we have balanced the, the budget within the appropriations. So if there was a hundred dollars left in one line and a hundred dollars was needed in another, we'd move it. We did a big jostling, jigsaw puzzle and that did not happen. That was not the way that this was settled this year. This year, we didn't do that. We just took where those areas were that we were so incredibly overspent on. We didn't pull in any of what was left in other areas and we did a resolution to pull out of contingency or general fund. In the end, it may settle out a little bit differently than what that resolution made it appear to be. I'm not sure. This year, the treasurer has returned to the process of we will have resolutions throughout the year in any spot that it looks like our expenses are out of whack with what we have budgeted for. I just mentioned that I'll have a resolution next month. So with that, this board is going to be kept well attuned to what is happening, not only in the DSS budget, but in all of the other departments as well. It is another factor by having this report here for people to see. That is as close as we can get to, to saying what's gonna be needed in twenty-six.
Don't you believe you're gonna, I, I think what's most important is we're gonna be within the twenty-five budget. Because that was the anomaly that threw us off last year, that we weren't.
From what I've seen, I don't think we have that crystal ball because there are people who don't leave hotels, get fair hearings, have to stay longer. They're never gonna pay us back. When they're doing their job and we get someone out, it doesn't end the process. They, they don't wanna go. We don't know how many people are going to be new coming in this year. And they're very hard to get rid of if they're not motivated to get out. Some of them maybe aren't motivated to get out, but that's not our control.
No, that's true.
So I, I wish we could expect that of Tammy, but I don't think we can. But we can, and she's working very hard at providing better dashboards for us. We, her numbers in January for homelessness were down about thirty percent. You saw the ramps up before, which was just, where did this all come from? And we've all heard theories. But we're, we're trying to unwind this and unravel it. And then so it's working. And it will get better, but I don't think we have definitive answers for what we're planning this year.
Or are we doing something different than we do in the past or just more of it?
We're following, she's following the state rules and guidelines, absolutely.
Right, but no, I, that was what I was asking. If we're, if we decrease thirty percent, are we just doing more of that or?
There are more apartments available. There are more apartments available, places for people to get into more quickly than they had been able to previous. It is a matter of what the barriers are to them accessing low income housing. There is not enough affordable housing in our area and quite frankly, with the way everything is for all different levels of our society, affordable housing is pretty much untenable. So it's, we're, we're working on what there is. We're utilizing every resource that we have and bringing, bringing things around as quickly as we can. We're using contracts with the different shelters that are providing more direct one-on-one to assist people in, in becoming more stable. All of those things do have little components that add up. We're, we're doing it, everything that we can.
It's just because we're often washed by the public. I just wanna make sure that everybody remembers that. It's not Tammy's choice to provide all these services and she's not wasting money. She's acting within the guidelines of the state mandates of what services have to be provided. It's not necessarily their department that caused the problem. It's the mandates from the state. Money she has to spend would have put us in this position. Just wanna make sure everybody remembers that. Anybody who doesn't know the background of the subject is aware.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Yes. Do you have a number for how much of your budget or a number that's unfunded, like unfunded state mandates across the board for your department? Do you have a, a percentage of your budget or a number that we have to come out of pocket?
The fourteen million.
Well, that's, that's.
That's the net cost.
Okay, alright.
That's what became local sure.
That's the sum of all the difference.
And to reinforce what Tammy said earlier, if I, if I might, I'm sorry. What I, what I noticed looking at the financials when I was reporting the expenses were up three point one million. Net cost was up five point two million. So that reinforces her claim that there was significantly more expenditures in those two programs that have a lower reimbursement rate. The, the, the numbers reflect exactly what she just, her, her narrative she just gave you is reinforced by the numbers. There was much higher expenditures program that has a much lower reimbursement.
Does it need ten million to change to make that significant difference?
I think that, I wanna ask Brian's question differently and maybe softer. That we went from a net cost of five million to ten point two, so up five point two million. Is this the new, this is in a social commentary, it's truly a question. Is this the new Washington County that we should budget for and prepare the taxpayers for? Or did you see something odd in two thousand and twenty-four? That maybe will work itself out, even if it's in a three-year house cycle, right? And so if ten point two is the new net cost for Washington County Social Services to provide the programs to our residents, then that's the number that we have to tax for. So maybe the, the easier question is, in, in your opinion, right, you're the boots on the ground person. Is this the new Washington County that we live with and we need to now find a way to fund it? Or did you see kind of a weird thing that may, even if it's over three or five years? And to come back to. Or did you see kind of a weird thing that may, even if it's over three or five years, and they come back to.
Yeah.
Some norm?
I, I do think it's a reflection still of coming out of COVID. Because we had so much funding that covered before for all of the hardships that were caused during that. I, I do think that we'll end up having a higher cost for the taxpayer moving forward than we did. Years past, I don't think it'll be as high as it was last year.
If this board knows that, right? Then when the taxpayers ask those questions, they can be better prepared to say, look. This, this is the new Washington County, we have people in need, we have children in need. That becomes very hard for the taxpayer to be angry about when you explain why.
Yes.
Do we know you have a rough idea of what the step increase would be?
I didn't.
So I know that looking at first quarter 25. I'm encouraged that I hope that we're on a new, new trend. Cause even, even on my financials, which unfortunately Tammy and her staff have to live in two worlds. The state requires them to, to report on a cash basis. I require them to report on a accrual basis. So it's kind of hard sometimes bridging the two systems and speaking the same language. But even, even on my financials, it looks like first quarter of 25. Expenses were up 900,000, but the revenues were up like 1.2. So there might even be some kind of timing issue where some revenue came in after my books were closed. Which, I mean, one, one RF two claim for her is 1.2 million dollars. One, one claim coming in after I closed my books can significantly materially change the, the outlook on that fiscal year, right?
Some of it is also just the program changes, the waivers that are finally are going away, that the. Direction that the state is allowing us to take that was always consistent with law that they pushed back on and passed as well. Um. The thing that's looming out there is the talk on the federal level. And that will be hugely damaging to our budget if it doesn't tie together the money in the mandate. So that is, we can, I can tell you that none of the percentages changed last year. That they were, that, you know, the reimbursement all stayed the same as the state had said it would, because that has been a problem in the past. But this time that was not the case. But the state, there's, there's no question, the state will pass on to us whatever hurt comes from the federal level. And a lot of these programs are federal.
This, this scariest conversation would be. I mean, yes, her, her agency as a whole, with just the conversation attached to Medicaid. If the feds truly change the floor for New York. Right, for the 50%? New York, I promise you will not eat all of the increase that comes with that. That if the feds start playing with the, the percentage that they'll federally fund. It's a significant number and not just for Washington County. And, uh, there'll be counties that are, you know, beside themselves with the number should, should that cost shift back to a gun. It's bad enough that they took away the two F maps that kind of kept us, you know. You know, floating a little bit, you know, safely for years now. Now, in addition to removing the two F maps, there's some serious conversation about changing the. Who, who shares what portion of the pie? That conversation scares the heck out of me.
And back to the conversation on taxpayer and Cassie's point. At what point can you say we can't fund, but to a certain level? And the other, the other part of that is. You know, can't provide the service.
You won't like the answer to that, and I personally, as a commissioner, give it. Your budgetary restraints do not control the provision of first services. That's, that's a, that's an answer that you're not going to like, that's true.
Well, the good news of that is that we can't concern ourselves with anything we can't control. We have to concern ourselves with what we can. That's, that's the way the bucket always goes.
Chairman Hanky. One thing that we get banded about is a, is a huge increase in homelessness costs. Uh, that might be a good reflection of where we're, how things are happening. Now, what changes might be, is there some way you could? Do you have a, a monthly or? You know, handle on how many motel room nights we've done that month? That would give us just a, a reflection of where we might be heading. That was, you know, going up or going down, that might be something people report, you know, six million. Uh, I think that might not going to tell us, it's not going to tell us a lot of. The many gritty to this, but it might give us an idea of general trends. Just that.
Yeah, but they're all lagging indicators for, for, unfortunately, they want us to feel like indicator here, we're strapped for it.
Yeah, we're seeing what happened, but still, you know, seeing what happened can tell you where you're, you're going at.
I'll, I'll hold as much data as I can to give us something conclusive.
Okay, thanks.
So I don't know if anyone noticed, I'm making yellow and it still reads full star. But there was, there's a mirror bump, senior programs are going to be, potentially going to be limited by program.
You can probably hear more about that from Gina, she.
You're going to send something around this.
Correct, I did respond to that with an email this morning.
So may I jump in a little bit? So. So Bob did bring up a very interesting point. We, there are things we shouldn't do at the board level, public-private partnership. Or what we think is a permanent small number of displaced housers scattered around the country. We, we are reliant upon a system that is capacity bound and therefore can be gouged. But we, over the last five years or 10 years, haven't had less than a certain number of room nights a year. I think seven or eight thousand room nights a year. There are things we could encourage, public participation with grant support. And not gouging prices, and we should be looking at that too for our own social services.
Is it hard, cause I don't want to make sure, but is it hard to track when you're looking at the amount of nights? Is it possible to see how many, like maybe the new ones coming on, that number might have gone down versus the ones that can't get moved down? Cause I think that might be another indicator, you just can't get some out, but you still have this consistently high numbers. But maybe you have less than once coming out, so that does show improvement that way too.
Yes, we've, we've broken that out in the past when our numbers were smaller. It is, a lot of it's going to need to be truly taking raw data from a spreadsheet, but we can get that.
Cause I think that might be another that came down.
Yes, that's like the state, yeah, yeah. Can do that.
The, I think I brought this up before, and I think I've heard other people talk about it. Um. Is it a bad idea to try and find a facility that we can turn into our own homeless housing? It, it would be a cost upfront, but if this is, but you know, it's just a wavy trend, it's not like it's going to die. Would it be smart for us to invest in that? Because in the future, hotel rooms are not going to go down. Um, we're already paying more than, you know, John Q would pay to go to the same place. So what are we? But like Brian said, we can only do what we have power to do. Why, why wouldn't we do that?
Yeah, we'd need to be certainly a county initiative. Um, you'd need to find sponsors to be able to assist at. At least in operating any kind of a facility, because that would be. Excruciatingly difficult to do in our civil service world. Um, to, to staff as it would need to be done, et cetera, just, just, you know, picking an, an easy point to refer to. It is also still focusing on the homelessness as opposed to the solution, which is affordable housing. So there's, it need, it should be both that, that we look to try to provide for our county. And it's still requires those partnerships. There are different, uh. Funding streams that are available through the state, sometimes it's a short window that you would need to apply for. But through very complex processes where you've done studies and you submit for the grants. And you've got somebody that's able to stand that up for you. There can be funding available also to help with that initial cost.
Is it also the understanding that if the county were to be sponsoring such an activity? If we got to a certain size, the staffing requirement would also grow what we need to have on site for the certain number. If we, we start becoming more costs, once we cross a certain level of number.
Right. With motels, at this time via legislation, we are not required to provide. Various services that shelters are required to provide through their, their legislation. If we were to build something, it would necessitate it being a, a shelter.
And what are the extra things with shelters again?
Be the provision of meals, uh, accesses for, access for laundry, um.
So we build a hotel.
Doctors being available.
Right, it's, it's, it's big. And we're now on the hook for that.
And if you build it, they will call. You'll just enable more people instead of committing a back ship of that.
Right wing repair trucks being another.
Or my doctor, so, so, yeah. We have trouble getting them out of the hotels now.
Yeah.
It, it's a very, we control. I'll put them out, I'll put them out, I'll put them out. It just, we would have a little more control in that. There it is.
Yeah, just getting back to the agency updates. If you want to dismiss me, you hate me.
Doing wonderful. Um, so let, let's keep, let's keep moving on next thing.
So, um, under the area of agency updates, I attended a commissioner's convening last week. There was a statewide meeting that was hosted, uh, by the state agencies over at DSS. We focused on a wide berth of topics, uh, budget-related program, programming, legislation and some leadership. There were no huge, um, aha moments or anything of that nature related to the budget. We're still waiting for some of the guidance to come through from the state related to the budget that has just been passed. I would say we're probably waiting for most all of it to come through, we have got very little so far. Um, we had already seen writing on the wall for receiving less funding in our flexible fund for families. Um, that is something that. We utilize to, to offset some admin costs, some contract costs. So there are other areas that we can charge that off to. The flexible fund is a hundred percent money, so then. Charging that out someplace else would not be that 100% revenue. It is still, th- those services are being provided to meet the, the needs or the service provisions for mandates that we have. Our flex, our flexibility in it is who we contract with or exactly what those contracts do, but it is still a mandate. Um, they, you may have heard that there was more funding released for childcare grants. That was something that came up, uh, towards the end of the budget process. What, uh, the language at this point says is that it would be an additional $250,000. Or six and a half percent of your allocation, whichever is more that you could be eligible for, which means the 250 for us. They are, the state is saying that they will only release that once we show that we have. Officially spent all of our funds. Um, they're giving a little latitude for our claims matching, um, projections. They're going to send more information to us on that. I don't think that those additional funds are going to allow us to, to stop using the waitlist. I don't think they're going to allow us to open more cases. I think it may help us neutralize and, and fend off what may have been a local hit. To the, to the, uh, cost of the. Grants that we had, um, extended. There, um, the family center case management, uh, that was a new funding stream that came last year. We were told at that point, reasonably sure that it would be continued. We hired a person on, on that, those funds. We also have a contract and it did a few other things. You might remember last year I was asking about buying a van and creating a mobile unit to go to motels as an example. That was one of the things that they did, the state would not allow those funds to be used for. Uh, when, when it all shook out, they actually did specifically say, um. That they're looking to have the uses, the, the spending be able to be more flexible and more, more uses. And they, they specifically mentioned that they had heard from a county that they had, were looking to have a mobile unit. So they didn't say they're going to allow it, but they said they realized last year that places, uh, some counties wanted to be able to do that. So that funding should be the same, that would not require a resolution. We budgeted for the same flat funding as we had had built in last year, um, into 25. So it, it should help us just to continue paying for the things that we are paying for. Um, I may come back to you with, we've got a little more here with flexibility, what can we use it for? Um. And then the last of it is, everybody's wondering what's going to happen with the federal. Plan, we, the big beautiful budget passed through the, uh. House while we were at these meetings, but there's still no clarity on any of that. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Tammy.
Thank you for still giving us a hundred percent right up to the. The door.
Always.
Thank you. We're putting a padlock in the bed.
Alright. Moving on to public health.
Morning.
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 So the first thing I have is a request to, um, apply for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. Um, this is a grant we've had for quite a few years. Um, right now they're saying the funding is going to be flat, so it'll be $52,099. Uh, and we do have to submit our budget for that, um, by the beginning of June, so I'm just looking for a.
Motion by Darryl and seconded by Sam, all in favor?
Aye.
Your motion passes, it goes to automatic, right? Good at finance.
And the second thing I have, um, is I just wanted to have a discussion about the Community Connections Paper, which is something that. Uh, oh, I think it's together with New York Vermont Media. Um, Gina had mentioned previously that they were going to be stopping their printing of that. Um, which really would be detrimental, um, to both of our departments. But, um, public health gets about 90, over 90% of their referrals for their programs, a couple of their programs through that paper, the printed version. Um, so we were very concerned about the stopping of that. So we do have about $2,000 in our public health budget, um, that we could, um, use to keep that printing. Um, when they don't have other sponsors to be able to print it. Um, so I'm just looking for permission to use that money out of our budget to offset the cost of the printing and distribution. Of the Community Connections Paper through New York Vermont Media. Um, and then the other piece of that is how we would pay, we don't have an individual contract with, for New York Vermont Media, because Gina holds that contract. Um, so just a question of whether you would want us to pay that directly out of our budget? Or if we would reimburse, um, OFA, um, for that cost and they would receive the invoice? We would need to somehow directly pay it out, out of our budget, either to OFA or to New York Vermont Media in order to be able to claim it, um, with the state.
Yeah, I think might be the easiest way is to go through the OFA, but we still need a motion to move it to finance, right? We need a motion to move this request to finance, seconded by Sam. Had, uh, pushed by Darryl. All in favor?
I have.
Not my show, in discussion, excuse me.
Gina, are you finding that the block media, the New York block? Are they kind of pushing you away from advertising? Cause I've noticed they're not doing anything anymore in grateful. I mean, they're really very selective about where they're working, their reporters are basically falling right off the map. I don't know, maybe it'd be better if you went up. Say the Salem press just came out that magazine was article that one Bob writes for. Uh, maybe we ought to look for a different. Oh, sure.
We did put an RFP out, um, from the procurement process, I want to say over, over a year ago. And what we found was that NYPT media came back, um, incredibly less costly than other newspaper producers. Uh, so going back. Uh, so going back and maybe tagging on to what Tina was talking about is earlier this year, I spoke about how NYPT media was no longer going to community connections paper, that they were going fully um digital. Uh, since then, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of discussion, and what we've learned is that they have um some pretty big financial sponsors um that still want to contribute to having a printed paper and having uh things like their flyers put into that. So at this time, it's evalving and we look at this calendar year. Uh thankfully, with the so- the financial support from public health, we'll a- we'll be able to have a printed community connections paper every month this year. Um, which again speaks um values about how we can reach our home. Uh, so it will no longer be in uh prepress, so it will be a supplement anymore. It's going to be truly a standalone printed community connections paper and include um the advertisements of of the financial sponsors. So our financial end uh for OFA is not gonna change for a month. Um, we just had that one month lapse um that they were asking for additional funding for it.
And we don't.
Do we actually need a budget amendment? I mean, you said the finance, but I'm not sure it needs to go anywhere.
I didn't know if it changed lines or is it just?
Do you have a, Gina, do you need a budget amendment?
We don't have the extra funding in our budget not to cover this piece, so.
So you do need a budget amendment for the expense side. That's right, that's why I wanted to wrap my hat around. And then the other thing, make sure you and I connect if you're gonna start taking donations in. Because this is unlike your meal, this is unlike your meal donations. I want to connect about that process.
Yes, yeah. The only question I had, Gina, is this gonna, is this going to be a is it a stopgap to just fix the program or just gonna enable to keep going?
So at this time, uh we have a financial plan for this calendar year twenty twenty-five. Um, and right now we're waiting to see how it's gonna play out in twenty twenty-six. And the reason we is there, they have some pretty big uh um sponsors, but advertisers, and right now they have fully committed to the twenty twenty-six calendar year to see what that's.
But there's twenty fuck, there's twenty thousand, there's two thousand, excuse me, will carry through the end of twenty-five. Thank you.
Less, less, there's a financial sponsor that holds that, um which we wouldn't have control over.
Any additional questions? Then all in favor?
Um, I just have a couple of program updates. Um, a couple of requests that came through after the uh the agenda was submitted. Um, the one thing I did wanted to discuss and bring up was the resolution that was passed at the uh A sixteen uh board meeting, resolution one fifty-nine, and it was dealing with the north, the healthcare coalition of the North Country. Um, concerning the the Medicaid cuts that are coming through. I had had discussions with uh Dr. Gara and Dr. Ruggie, who are both uh members of that coalition. Um, neither one of them could be here today. Uh, they're both traveling right now, but uh I do have quite a bit, quite a bit of information on that, and you may hear, you may be contacted uh by somebody on that coalition to discuss uh those Medicaid cuts and how you can bring that to your town boards um to pass a similar resolution or to reach out um to our federal representatives. So um just wanted to make you all aware of that in case somebody does get in touch. I do have a, um, there is, they do actually have their own website as well. Um, so I can also forward that information on to you as, and there's talking points and things like that, sample letters uh that can be sent out. So um just wanted to add on to that. Appreciate the the passing of that resolution uh at the board meeting. Um, and the next thing I have, we have to prepare a Medicaid cost report for our licensed home care um service agency. Um, in previous years, uh we've we've used McCarthy and Conlin. Um, and we'd like to request a waiver to the purchasing policy um to continue to use them um for the twenty twenty-four uh fiscal year to to help assist us completing that cost report. Uh, they're very familiar with our agency. They've been doing it for many, many years. Um, the cost of that is five thousand five hundred uh which is in our budget um and is consistent with previous years.
And this is Sam, motion to accept. Waiver, any, is there a second, any discussion on the waiver? All in favor?
Thank you. Um, the next thing I have, I just wanted to give you an update on our fellowship program. Um, the preliminary injunction um that was granted last week um is going to prevent the layoff of our fellow. Um, so again, that's not one of our employees, um but it is to an outside company through the New York State um Public Health Corps. Um, so we will be able to to keep her on staff um throughout the the rest of the fellowship uh program. Um, as long as nothing else comes through, I'm stopping that preliminary injunction. So just an update there. Um, and then the last thing, I do have a request um to reorder sunscreen and hand sanitizer. Um, we do hand that out um um at the fair and our different tabling events. Um, and the other thing I wanted to put out there is if you have youth commissions uh within your towns that could use that at their concession stands. I know there's many times I showed up at the bar and there was no sunscreen um for my child. So anyway, if if they need that, uh we can provide that and have that um available. So um, you know, people can have that available if they need it um at the commission fields. And so just looking for permission to reorder um.
Resolution for permission or?
Nope, I think because it's considered a promotional giveaway, so I have to get permission to.
Scott moves, accepting permission. Also, I got seconded, the discussion.
Yeah, let me know and I can send it over.
Well, good morning, stuff.
One item I had on the agenda is a request to provide food uh for a training. My understanding is that uh I need to get committee approval to bring food onsite into the municipal center. On June uh eleventh, uh which is, which is a Wednesday from ten to three P M, we have a training scheduled. It's part of our crisis intervention training and systems mapping. It's um a part of a technical assistance project that the Hudson Health ordered to us. Um, what it does is it brings together local law enforcement, the uh our Washington County Sheriff's Office and Hudson Falls P D are part of this. And that brings them together with some government health providers, the hospital, um mobile crisis, different crisis services. So the eleventh, we have the systems mapping exercise and we have them all participating. Um, there's also agencies from Warren County that are participating, so they would be coming over. Uh, Hudson Falls Police and Warren County Sheriff's. Chelsea, I represent them from state.
Do they bring them to donors? They're looking for.
We do have money in our budget, so uh it's not, uh, you know. They're thinking of trying to go simple, you know, pizzas and salad and water.
Right, motion to permit food brought into the building. Scott, seconded by Darryl. The discussion, all in favor?
Okay, and then uh if I could, I did, don't have on the agenda, but just a couple of COVID updates. We did have a solicitation out for our opioid settlement funds. We're coming to our department separate from the county direct funds. And um we did receive seven for, seven proposals for those funds. We had approximately five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars available to distribute and proposals came in at one point one million. So um we did ask for one to three years window of pro- proposals. Uh, but if you look at the one-year proposals for first year is about five hundred and sixty, so it actually matches fairly close to the money that we have. You have a group from the Community Services Board and that top committee that's gonna re- be reviewing the proposals and thinking for us, so. I will keep every, the committee posted. Also, just want to provide a status update on our um C P L seven thirty expenses, because I I know that's been an issue over the last number of years. Um, Washington County for twenty twenty-five has a hundred fifty thousand budgeted for these expenses. And through April at this point, we're approximately three hundred thousand. So we really, we will be in overall running that budget.
You're over now, Rob, is that what you just?
No, we're at about three hundred thousand and there's three fifty budgeted. But those are three, the bills, there's a little bit of a lag in the bill, so that's through April. So if if I, if you count, um I think there's one individual in currently. We're we're pretty close to it.
It it wouldn't break my heart if we get in front of it and sent it to finance now, because it one more voucher run, you can, you can blow that, the rest of that number.
Lot of the year left. Okay, so motion to move.
All right, and I can work with Rob and come up with a number. Because they under the the due process this year, Rob, you can't overdraw the account anymore. It's, you even get to come back every month and ask for another bite of the apple. That, that's the due process. Yep. We might as well get in front of this one, because it's going on.
Motion, motion, seconded by Scott. Discussion, all in favor? One abstain, I guess.
I heard him say.
Can I just follow up human to?
You can just send me email and what you want to see through now, and you can always come back again.
Sam, would you much say an aye? Aye.
You got, you got enough.
Yeah, and other business, is there other business to be brought here today? At this point, so now we're getting to the episode.
Would you like me to speak about the articles?
Yes, I didn't read it earlier. You said it was this morning, right?
Well, thank you. To go off uh Supervisor O'Brien's comment that there was a recent article released from the Post Star about cuts to aging programs at the federal level. So I have a message from NISOPA Executive Director Greg Olson that I can share around with you. Thank you. This message again was released from NISOPA's Director Greg Olson and talks about the again proposed federal budget cuts and the impact. So I could um let you take this with you and reach out to me with any questions, but I would like to clarify what this looks like as far as budget impact at the local level. So in this uh message, you'll see on the bottom, uh it does speak within the body of the letter that the Administration for Community Living uh has been dissolved, that fifty percent of the ACL staff have been terminated. The Administration for Community Living did oversee certain aging programs, and my understanding is that these programs have now been redistributed to different um houses within the federal government. At the local level, uh on the bottom of the first page, it talks about Title Three D, that is federal funding for evidence-based programs. Here in Washington County, we receive an approximate amount of little over four thousand dollars in Title Three D funding. That money, a hundred percent of that money goes to public health for the facilitation of our Tai Chi program. On the next page at the top, it talks about um two Title Seven programs. These do not directly impact our department, nor does the lifespan respite programs. The SHIP slash High Cap Program, which is the Health Insurance Information Counseling Assistance Program. Uh, our pro- our office would be impacted um in approximately a little over thirty-four thousand dollars. We allocate that money to staff salaries. Uh, that again is to help individuals navigate health insurance, specifically Medicare programs. In the middle of this page, you're gonna see some um additional programs proposed to be eliminated. Uh, these programs again do not have a direct budget impact at the local level. Um, of course, things do trickle down and people do come to us with it, you know, for questions or um guidance on these types of services. Um, but again, there's no direct budget impact to us on this. It is still unclear uh about adult protective services that again is um funded under Department of Social Services, and Tammy and I have talked about this to see if we can get any specific information around it. I have not received any yet about APS, what that's gonna look like um at the federal level. Again, these are all federal level um propositions. Any questions?
Many to ask.
That, correct, yes, a lot of unknown entities. So I hope that again uh does answer some questions, and most certainly I will share report any, any additional information in regards to actual cuts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we now move into just move into the.
So obviously, gold, silver, and brown, but three separate.
Yeah, so we're. Why you realize it's a different gears? Yeah, they don't put a year.
We taking a brief precess for?
Yes. Yes, uh.
No, I actually had this made for the last year. Uh, yeah.